Alright, good evening everyone. I would like to bring the August 15th, 2021 meeting of Danabur Board of School Directors to order. May we have a roll call, excuse Ms. Caldwell?
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mr. Frallinger?
Here.
Ms. Krajewski?
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Bolger? Ms. Joseph?
Oh, here.
Ms. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Evans? Mr. Chivon?
Here.
Mr. Phelps, here.
Here.
Having a little bit of difficulties here with the reading, but we will get through it. Okay, Mr. Evans, can we have the invocation on the pledge, please?
I think we might have to have Mr. Evans leave the meeting and then come back in.
Okay. Why don't we take one minute, let him?
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Bless all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And grant to this board and their deliberations this evening the Spirit of wisdom truth and not.
Mr. Phelps, would you like to do the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Alright, moving on to number two, public comments. Do we have any public, any public comments?
We do, Mr. Phelps. Amy Ferris would like to comment, so I am going to allow her to speak if you'll just give me a minute.
Okay.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
If you would just, yes, if you could please just state your, your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is Amy Ferris, and I live at 1122 Pennsylvania Avenue in Prospect Park, Pennsylvania. First and foremost, I want to thank all of you for the hard work that you are doing and have done to keep our children educated and in school last year, especially when so many kids across the country were not. I want to let you all know how much I appreciate that. I also appreciate the work happening and changes made this school year to have all of our children, children there five days a week. I know as of the July meeting, masks were still optional. And my understanding is that there will be an addition to the health and safety provisions to determine when masks would become mandatory based on district numbers. I am speaking to show my support to allow masking to remain optional through the school year. Quote-unquote, follow the science. As per numbers on the CDC website, our children are still more likely to die from the flu than they are COVID. In 2017-18 flu season, 643 children died of the flu. 2018-19, 477. 2019-2020, 434. These are numbers of children that have died in the short amount of time of nine months during flu season. In the 17 months, which is almost twice the amount of time for COVID, 361 children have died. And as of August 12th, the COVID death rate in children is anywhere from point zero zero to point zero three percent. While the transmission rate in kids has increased since the beginning of July, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, data indicates that severe illness due to COVID-19 is still very uncommon among children. If we are to follow the science and the numbers, our children are more than likely to die in a car accident, childhood cancer, or the flu than they are from COVID. I ask you to consider these statements before mandating masks at any given time during the school year. If we do go to our mandatory mask mandate, I ask that you at least consider that there will be no masks during outdoor activities such as recess, gym, and any other outdoor activities. My final statement and concern is that I ask that the board meetings return to in-person board meetings. If our children are able to go to school, we have concerts and sporting events happening across the country, and things have resumed, there's no reason why we cannot be holding these meetings in person. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ferris. Do we have anyone else? Ms. Riley? You're muted.
I'm sorry, I do not see anyone else making that request to speak.
Um, alrighty. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Ferris. We will take them under advisement. Our district and the superintendent's office is always available if you would like to reach out for any further discussions. Moving on to number three, then, Mr. Evans.
Let's do a trial run. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry for that inconvenience. Motion 3.1, that the following minutes of the regular meeting at the Interboro Board of School Directors held on July 21st, 2021 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. We will now hear from Kate Lee, our solicitor, for the solicitor's report.
Yes, good evening, Board President and Board members. The Solicitor's Office has been busy this month supporting litigation and also involved in the tax assessment appeals that are going on.
Alrighty, thank you, Ms. Lee. Moving on to number five, Mr. Evans?
From Financial, motion 5.1, the Treasury report for the month ending July 31st, 2021 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 5.2, the fund disbarred, missing the amount of $5,328,745.78 be approved.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero.
Aye.
Number six, correspondence? I don't think we have any correct.
We're showing no other correspondence at this time.
Okay. Moving on to number seven.
For personnel, motion to define personnel action to be approved. Starting with motion 7.1 on page two, going to 7.7 on page four.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Phelps?
Yes, Mr. Chivon?
Um, for any of the public that are watching, I asked a question on Monday about staffing, and Mr. Frascolo said our teachers, we have, our staffing for teachers is good. If anyone has any community members that would like to be an instructional assistant, a bus driver, we have availability. So I know there's members of the public on this meeting. So if you know anyone that would like to work those school hours, we, you know, please apply. We could always use more help in terms of instructional assistance and definitely bus drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Chivon. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Much motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 8.1, with regret, the drawing retirement be approved. F. Fowler, Spanish teacher at the high school with 22 years of service to the district, be approved for retirement effective September 2nd, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Curriculum Instruction, motion to the following items be approved, starting with 9.1 on page five and going to 9.13 on page seven.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Special Education and People's Services, motion that the following items be approved, 10.1 on page seven, going to 10.13 on page eight.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Technology, motion that the following items be approved, 11.1 to 11.4.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Facilities, motion that the following items be approved, 12.1, that the Board of School Directors approve the proposal for accredited environmental technologies, Inc., to provide hazmat-regulated design and quality assurance monitoring for Interboro School District property located at 200 South McDay Boulevard in an amount not to exceed $7,375 to be paid from 2020 bond fund.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next up, Mr. Evans?
From the Office of Finance, motion to the following items be approved, 13.1 to 13.6.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 14, that Board of School Directors approve the independent contractors agreement between Interboro School District and medical consultant Dr. David Webner, effective July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, not to exceed $11,500 to be paid from access and district funds.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Um, myself, Mr. Webner, you put a lot of work in for that little bit of money. You've been on double duty lately with everything that's been going on. I do appreciate it. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 15, that Board of School Directors approve the agreement and associated clause between substitute, substitute teacher services and Interboro School District effective August 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
Just a real quick comment, in addition to what I was saying about instructional assistants and bus drivers, if you want to be a daily substitute, please reach out to that subservice. Again, local community members who may have their teacher certification, we'd absolutely use you, especially in the crazy times we're in right now. So if you know anybody, please tell them to reach out, be a building sub. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chivon. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 16, that the Board of School Directors approve the memorandum of agreement between the Delaware County Intermediate Unit and Interboro School District to participate in the rapid antigen testing for COVID-19 wage program and under the DCIU, the Clinical Laboratory Improvement Amendment certificate.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 17, is a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the proposed emergency instructional time template for the 2021-2022 school year in accordance with Section 520.1 of the school code.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do we have a roll call on this, Ms. Caldwell, please?
Yes. Mr. Frallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Next motion, Mr. Evans?
Motion 18 is also a roll call motion, that the Board of School Directors approve the revisions to the 2021-2022 Health and Safety Plan.
Second.
Motion has been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, Ms. Caldwell, do we have a roll call on this?
Mr. Frallinger?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Joseph?
Yes.
Ms. Fagan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Chivon?
Yes.
Mr. Phelps?
Yes. Motion carries seven zero. Alright, do we have any old business that needs to be addressed?
Mr. Phelps, we do have one or two people that may have missed the earlier comment session. If you want to give them an opportunity to speak, I'll ask Mrs. Riley to let them in.
Normally, we do have a time allotment for that, but we will, due to the circumstances of our reading, we will open it up.
I understand, thank you.
Ms. Schoenhardt? Ms. Ms. Schoenhardt?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you were muted. If you could please state your name and address for the record, and you have a five-minute time limit, just so you're aware.
Thank you, certainly. My name is Sarah Schoenhardt, and I live at 120 North Wells Avenue in Glen Olden. Hi there, Board members. You've likely had the opportunity to see my handful of emails to all of you regarding my incoming pre-K students and masking. After speaking to Ms. Riley, I have additional questions and concerns that I have not heard addressed. Parents who don't want their children to wear masks have the opportunity to school virtually or in cyber school. They have added to dress codes per the CDC recommendation that everyone in school, regardless of vaccination status, should wear masks. I do understand that it's just a recommendation. However, for Darby's School District, has everyone not comfortable with it? If you ask me, it sounds wishy-washy. How can the board not know the peer pressure that children will be put under in school to go against parents' wishes? Isn't it smarter for the population at large to err on the side of taking the most precautions possible while keeping children in school physically, healthy, and emotionally healthy? My child has worn a mask since the age of three. They were two, there was no pandemic when they were younger at her previous school, and no problem wearing it from 7:00 in the morning until 5:00 PM when we picked them up from school. This is possible. Parents can deal with it. Teachers' gentle reminders do help the children handle the not breathability that other parents might be telling you is a problem. But we couldn't stay at that school because there's no pre-K available. So that's why we're at Interboro now. What would you guys do if this were your child, not able to be vaccinated, not necessarily around other people that are taking care of them? We'll set it from the beginning. My mask protects you, and your mask protects me. If you're not going to wear a mask to protect my child, I don't know if I want my child to be in this school. I understand that the new protocols might be that if a certain amount of instances or a high or substantial amount of COVID infections occur, then masking will be mandatory for the following week. That's not good enough. We don't have the luxury of risking 40% or 50% of our children and teachers because you don't feel like having some parents be mad at you. Let those parents be mad at you. Let them go to cyber school. Let them go to virtual school. Thank you very much. I just want to ask the board one last time, what would you do if this were your four-year-old?
Thank you for your comments, Ms. I know I'm going to tear this name up, I'm so sorry. Ms. Schoenhardt? Um, we appreciate your comments. If you have any questions that you need answered, you're more than welcome to contact the superintendent's office during the day, and we, Ms. Riley will answer any questions that you need answered. We really don't answer questions off the cuff during the meeting because sometimes we get blindsided with different items. So we always try to do it through our administration office. But we do appreciate you coming on. We do appreciate your comments, and they will be, you know, taken into consideration. Do we have anyone else, Ms. Riley?
Yes. Ms. Riley, there are, there is another one in the chat.
I'm sorry, I just saw that. That is a question. I was going to review that in my comments, Mr. Schoenhardt.
Danielle Duffy asked if you.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Ms. Duffy?
Hi, my name's Danielle Duffy. I have two children who are being Glenn Olden Elementary School.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. Can you state your address, please?
Yes, I was just about to do that. I live at 40 South Landwellan Avenue in Glen Olden. So I'd like to know if the school board is going to produce more clear guidance on exactly what the policy will be regarding masking in the schools. Um, the reason I ask that is because the guidance that was produced earlier in the summer indicates that the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health indicates that the individuals who are vaccinated will no longer be required to mask. Um, that to me necessarily implies the inverse statement, which is that people who are unvaccinated would therefore need to be required to mask. And that would be anybody who is under the age of 12, who is unable to be able to be vaccinated, which would include my children and anybody who is elementary school age. So I would like to know if the board will please clarify that mandate and that guidance, which I think would be appropriate, especially given what we now know is the situation and what is the best policy and practice for all of our kids and to keep everyone safe. So that's what I'm asking the board to do. Be more clear with the guidance and to take a simple step to protect the children who are under age 12, who are not vaccinated, who cannot be vaccinated, and who require a clear mandate to require a mask, which is a simple step to protect themselves and others from getting this very serious disease and to keep them hopefully in school. I appreciate the time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. We appreciate your comments and your statements. If I'm not mistaken, Ms. Riley will be putting something out to the public for the recommendations tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Ms. Riley?
Yes, there is a communication that is coming out tomorrow, Mr. Phelps. I was going to mention this in my, in my comments. We do have another parent requesting to speak, to comment.
Okay, again, I don't want to make this a habit because we do have a comment period in our meeting, but I will allow it due to the circumstances, okay?
Yes. Mr. Dano?
Yes, hello?
Hi, can you state your name and address for the record, please? And you do have a five-minute time limit.
Yeah, Michael Dano, 575 Chester Pike, Prospect Park. Okay, I just, I wanted to say, on behalf of the kids, if I'm not mistaken, at Tinnicum Elementary, last year, there was no more than five cases. And if I was correct, there was, two of them were teachers. The kids have a very high percentage of recovery rate. I mean, it barely affects the kids. I mean, I've been all over this summer watching, you know, ball games, football games. Everybody's out in the open, you know, in the restaurants, unmasked. But now that school's coming, all of a sudden, um, for instance, the Eagles game and the Phillies game. You can wear your mask going in, but you sit down and take your mask off. But 16 kids in a classroom can't take their mask off? And I sent in a description of a legal term of public transportation, and school buses are not public transportation. So, but my comment I wanted to make is, if everybody's seen the Board of Health and the Public Board of Education meeting with the senators a couple of weeks ago, it, the Board of Health actually said it would be hard for any school to push these mandates because there is no state mandate. We have no state mandate in the whole entire state. But now we want to make the kids, all of a sudden, wear masks. I mean, I have a kid in football right now. No masks, kids are playing, having fun, living life. Uh, he played baseball, living life, had fun. But we know this far in advance that we want them masked up in schools. I think that's unfair to the kids. I mean, it's, I mean, I heard comments about, you know, well, if you don't want to wear a mask, go virtual. No, we have rights to be where the same person is. Everybody has rights to be anywhere. We're not, we should not be segregating the body. I mean, that's all I really got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Dano, for your comments. We appreciate you coming on and telling us what you have on your mind. Again, if you have any questions that you need answered, you're more than welcome to contact the superintendent's office at the Administration Building. And we would get any questions that you have that you need answered, taken care of for you. Okay. Do we have anybody else in the mix here?
No.
No.
Alright, thank you all for your comments. We do appreciate them. We don't take them lightly. You know, the board does take them into consideration as well as the administrators. And, you know, we are trying to keep everybody safe, keep our employees safe, our children safe. We want a safe environment, safe learning environment. You know, our kids are our most important asset. asset that we have in this district. And, um, you know, I know we don't all agree with, uh, some of the things that are going on in today's times and whatever. But we do want to keep everybody safe. You know, we do want to put our best foot forward in, you know, being, uh, socially responsible, I, I guess you could say, uh, with, uh, the times of, uh, that we are involved in right now. All righty, um, do we have any new business that we need to address? You're muted, Ms. Riley, just so you know. Okay, we will now hear from our superintendent, Ms. Riley.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Um, I think I'll just review some of the, um, questions that came up that, um, I took notes on while the parents were speaking. I will just give a brief overview um, of what's going to be reflected in the health and safety plan. Also, just so parents are aware, there is a communication that will be going out first thing tomorrow morning um, with a letter and then the two documents that, um, I will be referring to, um, and that I presented at work session. Um, so based on these changes or these revisions to our health and safety plan, um, we will be using local incident rates to determine masking for students and staff. This will be done on a weekly basis. Oops, excuse me, that was a timer. We will be doing, not my timer, we will be doing this on, um, a weekly basis, and information will be coming out every Friday. So included in that information will be, um, the district masking chart, which now the change is, is that when the community or the inner borough community is in substantial or high, masking will be required for all staff, students, and any visitors that come into the building. We have another document that's, um, I, a local COVID tracker that's a community update that will be included as part of this communication. And that will provide the local data for parents to review and staff to review to know what the masking status will be for the following week. Um, so yes, we are looking at it on a week by week basis. Um, and we believe that as a local decision, um, we are able to have that flexibility in determining when students should be masked. So I think the key is for parents that when the incident rate within the four boroughs and the township of Tinnicum, three boroughs of the township of Tinnicum, um, are in substantial numbers, we will mask, and that will be mandatory for everyone. Just a couple of other bullet points. Masking is required on buses and any district transportation is ordered by the CDC, regardless of what the masking status is of inner borough. So if we happen to be in moderate, the masking, uh, order is still in effect. So students and staff, drivers, monitors will have to wear masks on the bus. Masks are optional when outdoors, regardless of the district mandate for in-school. So anything going on outside, um, kids are out on the playground for recess, um, they're out for gym class, they're taking a walk around. Sports at this time right now, if they're outdoor, masks are not required. Um, and during the masking period, just like we did last year, um, we will provide masking breaks throughout the day for students. They will, we will also provide masks for any students who do not have them when they enter into the building, um, so they're available. Also, I think it's important to note, and in this letter, um, there are links to the, to the location of where the data is, and also with the health, health, um, with the guidelines or the CDC guidelines, schools, masking and quarantining for schools is different than it is for, um, staff when it involves children. So the important thing here is, is that last year, we were very fortunate that we were able to have in school five for students, five days a week. Um, and I think everyone benefited who sent their children in person, and even if you were virtual, you had children being educated five days a week, all day, depending upon the model that you chose. Our goal this year is also to provide five days of in-person instruction. But we have to recognize that the goal is to keep all of our children safe and healthy and our staff. And the best way we can do that, to ensure that kids stay in five days a week, and per the CDC guidelines, if students are masked, then that allows them to stay in school. Even if there is a student who has tested positive in the classroom, they are even a close contact, they are permitted to stay in school unless they exhibit symptoms and then would need to stay home. So masking keeps kids in school. Um, I know that parents, parents don't necessarily agree with us, but the goal is to keep our kids safe, and this is how we can do that. Um, we do have the Virtual Academy as an option for parents who are not comfortable with students having to mask throughout the day. That information is available on the website. Um, again, I am available at any time. You are more than welcome to email me, call my office. Um, I'm pretty good about turnaround time, getting back to you, but I'm more than happy to speak with you. Our building administrators are more than happy to speak with you, but we want kids to be in school, and this is the safest way that we can do that. So, um, I appreciate everybody's time. The communication will come out tomorrow. I just wanted to do a quick update on registration and residency. Um, we roughly have about two hundred and twenty families that have not come in and provided their summer, um, residency information. So we're, we're getting close here. We're about three weeks out for the start of school, and that is a lot of families that have to come in to provide that documentation. So Monday, August thirtieth, is the last day, um, for students to be registered to start school on time. So I'm asking parents, if your information is not updated, to please go into, um, to call your building principal and make sure your information is updated. We have been sending out a lot of communication about registration. Hopefully, you've been getting that. Also, if you go to the website, there is a link to the registration, uh, tab that will provide you with all of the information, um, that we have. We are now doing online registration for all new students, and that's going very well. Um, but we really need parents to finish their registration, uh, process so that we can ensure that children are starting on time. And that is all I have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Do we have any comments from any board members? Okay, hearing none. Um, the meeting was a little, uh, fast tonight, uh, with all the comments and stuff, but I would just like to, uh, congratulate Beth Fowler for her retirement. Twenty-two years, our Spanish teacher. We will miss her. Uh, she taught my daughter, actually. My daughter had her, uh, going through school. So we will, uh, miss her, and we do appreciate your time. Twenty-two years, it's a long time to be in a position. Okay, and, um, also, Ms. Harris had stated something about meetings in person. We are having discussions on that. We are working towards that, and that is something that will be happening in the future. Okay. There will be no finance or GBO committee meeting in September. The next work session of the inner borough Board of School Directors will be held on Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven o'clock, seven P M. Location to be determined based on COVID mitigation strategies. The next regularly monthly public meeting of the inner borough Board of School Directors will be held on Wednesday, September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven P M. Location to be determined based on COVID mitigation strategies again. Okay, thank you all for coming. Thank you all for your comments. We appreciate them. Meeting is adjourned.